That we allow the Richard Steiner to provide his update and bring that context to bear. Prior to that public comment, just so it might be more genuine to have the public comment after that detail is shared. Just because you might then add something or think differently about it and maybe have a more meaningful discussion if you hear that. In advance of your comments and I was presenting that to the board as in the comments so far, then that might make sense. Folks agree?
How did you want to do it? Did you want to move his presentation to the beginning of the meeting? Or did you want to just ask people from the public?
I would stick to the agenda and you say if you wish to have the public comments specific to DPW that you'll have an opportunity to add that. So add basically add another.
Second public comment. Or just you can just have the public comment underneath that agenda item.
Okay.
If you guys approve that.
Yes, thank you. So that's that's the suggestion.
Okay, I've said one another clarifying question during that public comment period. That also serve as a Q and A or we're not really doing the back and forth here?
We're not doing the back and forth. This is an update for the board at this juncture. But my anticipation is that there are some public comments specific to the DPW as we're developing more information. And so I'm making that assumption. And so just being public comments specific to the DPW would not be an opportunity to exchange with the board. Or ask what your question, any questions would be coming from the board to Richard.
So specifically, wouldn't that add a third public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
It's like a half with like splitting it.
Okay, so this would be like a comment on anything.
There's not substance that that way, that way they can hear it.
Yes. So what you can do is you have the public comments already on the agenda.
Yeah.
You can defer the public comments on that agenda item to that agenda. So you don't have to create another.
Oh, okay.
And then the meeting here for the board of selectmen is to get the business of the town done. So that way you stick to the agenda. You can listen to public comments limited to three minutes.
Yep.
But if we had a whole bunch of back and forth this and that, you wouldn't be able to get the town's business done. So it's not for any other reason than that.
Yeah, okay, we'll stick to the agenda except for that addition. So so thank you for indulging me in that. So section four public comment, the section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board of selectmen. Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office or to me directly. And persons virtually wishing to comment should simply type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized at the appropriate times. So as mentioned, we'll have two sections here for public comment first. If it does not pertain to the DPW, you're welcome to join us now and add public comment. If you wish to have it be specific to the DPW, then it's an opportunity that you'll have after the presentation. If you wish, you don't have to, you can say it's your choice, but an opportunity if you wish to add it after. That probably would make more sense within the context of Richard's presentation. So with that. We'll start. Is there anyone virtually?
I have Kevin Tulamary.
Okay, you start with Kevin.
She's not available later, so.
Oh, okay. Kevin, please go right ahead. Turn us off, please.
All right. Yes, Kevin Tulamary, 110 Kenny Road, and thank you for your indulgence. I apologize. I will not be available later. But I'd simply, I am here today to support the Department of Public Works Action Committee. And their efforts to address the difficult situation at the Department of Public Works facility. Have submitted a detailed letter for the public record and hope that has been received. And all board of selectmen members have an opportunity to review it. In the letter to the selectmen from the DPW Action Committee dated August 20. The committee has recommended that the DPW operations be temporarily relocated. And the handling of municipal solid waste and recyclables be temporarily contracted with an outside vendor. As noted in the letter, quote, "The unanimous conclusion by the committee was to strongly recommend that both be acted on favorably." End quote. Mr. Steiner's impressive qualifications and the diligent work of the Public Building Committee over many years. With those added recently by the DPW Action Committee are abundantly evident in the report enclosed. The report concludes that the relocation of the DPW operations on a temporary basis would benefit the DPW employees, residents, and construction workers. Would also reduce the time span of construction and result in lower costs, saving the taxpayers money. I am concerned by the letter to the selectmen from Burn Hill, Burn Hill area resident Holly Havick. Options are limited, however, the destruction of the intact 300-year-old historic farmland and the negative impact on a vital watershed shed should not be an option. The 17 Kenny Road property offers all residents of Hebron and beyond a unique environmental, historic, and economic asset that can benefit us all for generations. I will remind the board of selectmen that their DPW survey found that 69% of more than 700 Hebron residents stated they do not want DPW construction on Kenny Road. The same survey also clearly stated that the DPW facility should be kept at Old Colchester Road. This is the mission established for the DPW Action Committee and it's vital that the board of selectmen supports this mission. I strongly urge the selectmen to quote, "Act favorably" on the quote unanimous conclusion set forth by the Action Committee. Thank you very much.
You, or any others on the panel? Okay, seeing no other hand virtually, anyone in the public comment at this point, this juncture? Right? All right, now we had a lot of Mr. Timery that we were asked to public comment. Do you want, should we wait until, is that specific to the DPW?
Yeah, I think we, I put it in the packet underneath that agenda item because that's what it was for. So saying we extended the public comment, I think it'd be.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good.
I mean, he said he couldn't stay, so that's why he read it.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, seeing no public comment at this juncture, I'm going to move to item number five on our agenda, which is getting our special recognition, Mr. Timery.
We had a full agenda, so we do not have anybody for that.
That moves us to section six, which is appointments and resignations.
Item six, there's an attached correspondence on Douglas Hebrew Association, President Kurt Smolich. D Democrat to fill the vacancy created by the recent resignation of Ian Danner on the Douglas Library Board of Trustees. And there's a motion and Mr. Smolich is here in the audience today.
Okay.
Sure. I'd like to read the motion, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint Kirk Smolich to the Douglas Library Board of Trustees for a term to run until December 2026.
Second? Motion's been read. Second and any discussion? Okay, sure. Prior to voting, Kirk, would you like to address the board?
Only that I appreciate the support. I'm anxious to get involved in helping the board trustees. There's something about retirement that suddenly makes a library a lot more filling and used quite heavily by the senior population in this town. So I'd like to be a part of that to make sure we continue to move forward and use the facility here to the things that are best for the town deeper. So I'm very excited to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As always, I'd like to thank those that are willing to give their valuable time back to our community. So thank you, sir, for stepping up and doing that in this case. Thank you very much. Any additional suggestions?
Yeah, I've known Kirk for, I'm not even sure how many decades.
Okay.
And it's been beyond years. A great individual and I think he will be a fantastic addition to that board. And I welcome him and thank him.
Thank you. Anything else on the board? Okay, thank you so much. I want to vote always a favor, please signify by saying aye, there's a opposed nay, or please note if you used to abstain.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Thank you.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you for the cast rod, motion passed unanimously. Thank you again, sir. Thank you.
I hope if you can do.
Oh, come on.
Thank you for what you do and I appreciate all that you folks do here. So thank you again for your point.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that would move us to item number seven, which is our town management report. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you hopefully know, we've been very busy with the ARPA projects, trying to get those moved along and there's a lot of irons in the fire. They're moving along. We did. It was just, it was an coincidence, but it did move on the cert truck, the cert truck's purchased. It's getting outfitted and it should be ready shortly. So it wasn't something that he just jumped on. It was in the works and it took that long to get it where it needed to be. So that that is going to be a completed project. We'll talk more about the ARPA projects on the next agenda item. But very busy, started the bridge, Zestu Bridge. If anybody's not buying, you'll see all the work with the trees all been cut. So pretty busy. Center sounds a mess, but it's going to pay off when it's done. We have, we started up our health insurance consortium meetings again, region eight, which I chair. So it's the first meeting we're still running somewhat similar to what we did last year this time of year. So not good, not bad, but the same. So we're, you know, it is what it is, you know, family knows insurance, you have your highs and lows. We had a good run for a while, so we're starting to see a little bit of a tick up, but we'll keep an eye on that. We still have plenty of money in the bank, so not what. We're busy in the middle of an audit. So, you know, we've got employees, so it's taking a little bit of time. We actually have new auditors, same firm, but new auditors to the town of Hebron, so a little bit different style. So we're getting through that. As I stated, the projects in the center are going well, the intersection, they're also putting in water lines to bring in the wells from the senior center area and we're going to connect those to add more water to the center. So that's what's going on at the same time. And all I do with the intersection improvements, we're adding two new water lines are going to go up. They already put did the pipe through the park that goes to the tanks in Loveville. So that's why it's a little bit of a mess, but we figure we get it done before the paving got done. So normally the state and the towns work backwards. We pave it, then we dig it up, but we prevailed this time, hopefully. And you will see trying to do some of that to relieve, relieve some of the stress on the schools we're working at night. We have an all boards meeting we've been preparing for and it's coming up on the 19th at 7:00 PM. And if the select want to come earlier that night at 6:30, there'll be a little get together or some refreshments prior to that kickoff. And then we're interviewing for a new finance person, a financial administrator, which is underneath the director. We had hired somebody, you know, a couple of months ago, but it just apparently didn't seem to work out for them. So they're leaving our appointment and we've already picked a successor for that. So that's what we've been doing.
Speaking of paving, we've also got 66 now.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I got stuck in that and I was like, great. Won't happen again.
6:30 to voting, let's get through it. Yeah.
Andy, I did have one question on the instruction and activities in the center of town.
Sure.
Well, in 66, so you know, there's a lot of chatter going around town. Why is this taking so long, et cetera? Just so, just so we have the facts and the air is clear.
Sure.
I know you mentioned about water lines going in, additional water lines. It's great. I've heard stories about frontier also going in, putting down lines.
So what happened was we saw some of the comments and everybody said it should be coordinated, a person should be fired. So I wish they would sit in the seat for a week. It's easy. So we can't control the utilities, we can't control the DOT. So what happened was this frontier knew about the project six months prior, they couldn't get the poles moved. So therefore the contractor couldn't get started. We ordered the contract. As far as the water lines for the Connecticut Water, DOT held up the permits for over a month. So everybody's ready to go. Everything was in place, signed. We had to wait on the entities because we're working at the state right away and we're working with utilities. So that's what the whole top was, both projects. Unfortunately, but.
I appreciate.
So we coordinated it on our end where we can't dictate the DOT, you know, they, it's a big district and they as they pack them out as they come. And it was a month later than we were told it was going to be, but it is what it is. So we're not trying to be derogatory, just that's what caused the problem.
I noticed that they had cones set up literally from the bottom of the hill, Marjory Circle all the way into Marlboro, well into Marlboro. Are they doing that whole stretch? What is their process and what are they looking at for timeframe?
So they're just doing from the Marlboro Town Line, the Hebron Town Line, Marlboro Town Line to down here due to the construction that we're doing in the center of town, they're going to come back next year and go to the Columbia Town Line. So they should hopefully, they're doing a shim, de-mold, just the edges, the beginning and start. And they're doing a shim now, hopefully next week to put the final course on.
Okay.
So weather permitting, of course.
Okay, so a week and a half, say.
I would, I would think they would, you know, the weather's going to be good Friday, so hopefully maybe they'll finish the shim. And then next week they can contract on the final course and they have a good week, they should be able to get it done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So move to section eight, old business. So without transition nicely into what Andy already gave us a little bit of information on, which is the ARPA status. So I'll turn it back over to him.
So on item eight, A, American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds Update. This was in the packet, attaches an update to the ARPA status report. The current balance of funds and reserves is $40,371. The town manager has conducted a thorough review of all the outstanding projects with department heads and all proposed products are moving forward at this time. I don't know if anybody on the select has any questions. I do have some quick updates from the Parks and Rec. The pickleball courts, the project is up to bid with final submit date dated for September 27. That's baseball field lighting site plan is being finalized, planning is on meeting scheduled for early October. Skate park, we're waiting attorney's ruling on a possible bid waiver to use the Connecticut contractor. The dog park, the town engineer is putting together a sketch of a dog park at Kenny Road location across the street from the Raymond Brook entrance. Once completed, will be submitted to the board of selectmen approval before presenting to planning and zoning. And Burn Hill infield improvements finalized bid documents should be out to bid by October. Well, that was some of those bigger projects that he's doing for Parks and Rec. And then the updates we got from the town planner are in the document that you had, there was still a bunch of moving parts to Parks and Rec stuff, so I got an update today. I thought that'd be more important, but it kind of still meshes with what we gave you.
Your lead bill still says, the note still says P and Z. I thought that they moved forward on that?
They did. Okay, so yeah, I should have said something like that. So they had a good meeting, they met with the playscape company and we're moving forward, that's scheduled, we put it.
Okay, so it's past P and Z, it's getting to the.
Far as I know, yes. It was an 88 compliance and we got ahold of an 888 company to give us some comments on that. And they're working with the, the actual company that's going to install it.
Yeah, thank you.
With the new potential proposed location of the dog park, is there going to be a dollar savings on that or we don't know yet?
I'll let Peter speak to that. I really haven't been involved in.
Yeah, one of the opportunities there to look at that, so one of the benefits is there would be no tree removal. Okay, so yes, the expectation would be substantially less and that's what Craig is working on. But that was going to be attractive, along with some other things, was that it was going to be a lot easier, less destructive and there's no trees to remove. Perfect. So there's an opportunity here to save some money and to obviously expand our parks in that area. But it don't have the final, we don't have the fountain. Yeah, you're exactly, you're, it would be significantly less.
Because the trees were like ballparked at eight to 10,000 for tree removal. So that's probably about what we're going to say.
Well, he also talked about his original fence estimate and again, he's, it's likely to be less because he found a contractor that did some other work for him. And then another project that he thinks will commit a lot less than he was anticipating. Between the trees and the fence, he's expecting a substantial reduction and he's fine tuning those numbers now in terms of the fencing to bring before us. To consider the project. So the expectation is it will be noticeably less. Nice.
I have a comment to add if I, if I may. So it's our first meeting in a while, right? And we have a packed agenda tonight, but we're really getting to crunch time here to get the rest of these funds allocated. And so I have put in for Andy to work with the town attorney to see how we can support the Hebron Community Theater. I know Claudia had mentioned the 3D printers. So maybe next meeting we start thinking about some smaller projects with the amount we know we have right now, where we can at least get it down to an amount where if we get an influx of 10,000, we can start identifying which projects are going to take those funds. Because what I don't want to do is leave money on the table. We're getting really, really close to time.
Understand, agree. I'd also again like to look at Peter's house, that's project's been going on since when I was a young child. No, maybe not that old, but it's, it's way too long and we need to get that thing off of the plate. You know, we've been keeping picking and just picking at all the problems. It needs to get finalized. It needs to get done. So I really am, it would be nice to see that project to fruition.
These are all good ideas and I think Andy, maybe for the next meeting, any comment you might add in terms of where you think the the balance should probably sit to get us over the finish line. I mean, because we'll be, all of a sudden 40 comes 15, are you now uncomfortable with anything that you're seeing?
Yeah, so that's a great question. For the next meeting, which is relatively quick, Tiffany's got a question into the town attorney, which I also put it through Parks and Rec. I think that's where it belongs, but town attorney's going to answer it either way. And then what I'll do is once again, I don't pick projects, I'll supply you with the requests as they came in. So we might need a little bit more for the bridge.
Okay.
I forget what happened or something over there. Secondly, the old town hall, there was a little bit more extensive damage due to the cubicle. So they've got an estimated list. So like I said, I'm not waving the flag for any project. We'll show you what you have for monies. There might be some savings in a couple of the projects and there might be a couple, you know, going into the red and a few others. I'll give you all that and then you guys can decide.
Awesome. Timing sounds great. So absolutely, that sounds like we should be talking about all that next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the ARPA? Or no? Okay. Thank you. Okay, that moves us then to section eight B, which is Department of Public Works Action Committee update. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Steiner to come up and lead us in that discussion and thank you to the board. I know there's a lot of material he provided in advance to help us prepare to ask questions. So this is really an opportunity for Mr. Steiner to represent the committee and just happy for me to tell, let everyone know how much work he's done personally. So the committee is responsible for what he's presenting, but a ton of work on your behalf. So thank you on behalf of the town for the work that you continue to do on behalf of all of us. But the idea here is, as you know, just in summary, we're looking at the outline is very specific. We need to vacate the premises in order to move forward effectively with the project and Richard obviously go through that. So we're looking at this juncture before we start to commit dollars to the project that is that something that the board is comfortable moving forward under that, that structure? So that as well and also introducing the concept that we do need, we should talk about responsibly as to whether or not we should be permanently exiting, as you said, out of the trash business, so to speak, permanently in terms of the fashion, the recycling. That doesn't mean we're not going to provide the service, but should be doing it a different way because that clearly would impact the project dramatically. And that's a big topic, but it's, we're at that juncture where the board needs to start to think about that and to bet that out. Because to put a project forward and then change our mind later, it would be, would not be a prudent way to attack it. So even though it's a sensitive topic, it's one that really does need to be talked about now, specific to how we would go about Old Colchester Road. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steiner to provide a summary and then obviously for us to ask questions. And then as mentioned before, those that wish to participate in terms of public comments specific to DPW, there'll be plenty of time to add that within the same structure, which is that three-minute structure per comment after we're done with that discussion and it's just done, it's done with this. So.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Richard Steiner, 330 West Street, member of the Department of Public Works Action Committee. As I indicated in my memo to Andy, the board members, the committee has finished the draft of the UQuest qualifications, also known the acronym RFQ, which will ultimately be sent out to design professionals, which they will exhibit their imminent qualifications that the town and the building committee should select them to lead us with the reconstruction of the project of Colchester Road. As Chairman Casper mentioned, there are two open items that we, we need to resolve. And the first one is the concept of vacating the site substantially of the day-to-day operations. What I want to really briefly focus on, not the extensive list of here's all the impacts, here's all of the issues. But I want to talk about the benefits very briefly about multitude of benefits by having Paul in his operation dispersed elsewhere throughout the town. You know, the understanding would be at a minimum, the salt chip would remain there. But in order to approach the construction in a logical manner, in order to create the minimal amount of disruption during the winter time, we would phase the construction to begin at the beginning of winter, but it'd be a very, if I say a light construction up till March, until Paul feels comfortable that he can hold the trucks and he no longer needs to be pulling salt and the salt chip. The construction schedule would be clearly identified that two things need to be finished by the following November. Construction of the new salt chip and the construction of the new garage. Garage may not be complete. It will give at least Paul an opportunity to have the trucks in a weatherproof, waterproof condition. That's one of the benefits, one of the first very logical benefits of vacating the site. The most important one that I should have mentioned first is safety. Safety for three very important groups, all personnel, residents, and most importantly also, busy construction workers. I can't over emphasize the fact that not only will Paul have heavy equipment running through the site, but if you attempt to do a construction project with a contractor involved, now you have two contractors running. The other thing that I want to emphasize is the narration I put together was compiled over well over 10 years. It started in 2013 when the original PVC started to dig into the concept and started looking at drawings. We started to get input back from various design professionals at the town retaining. And I listed, listed input from other folks I was working with or knew about that had worked on PPW projects. So lion's share, if not all, all of those commentary are from designers, instructors, subcontractors and contractors. So the major work will begin after, you know, after March, after Paul vacates the site. And the benefit is it's not a phased construction project. Project would be significantly shorter than a phased construction project. In construction, there's an equation, time equals money. The longer a project runs out, the more money you can expect to spend. Spend the site being vacated, there's two very extreme benefits for construction. One is going to be shorter, less costly. And if there's an issue on the site, a phased project, you're working in a specific area. If a contractor has a problem in a phased project, you've got a choice, either you have to fiddle around until the problem gets resolved or leaves the site. With the site being almost exclusively vacated, contractors have the avenue of using and working on the entire three at their site. One of the things that we heard as a committee and we even date back to the PVC is that with a phased construction project, there are two groups that are a little bit a little reluctant to really submit proposals on. First was the design professionals. Because when a phased construction project, they would have to generate a lot of drawings to show, articulate in printed fashion how each phase is anticipated to occur. Although we look at the DPW operation pretty simplistically, you have to look at the site, the multi tiers. What's there that's going to remain? And the answer pretty clearly is nothing that's there is potentially going to remain. There may be parts of buildings that might be salvageable and be used. But clearly based on the reports dating back to 2010, there really is no structures that are recyclable. And likewise, without, with a project not being phased, there'd be greater interest from contractors, general contractors, subcontractors to participate. Really the goal and the hope of the committee from the board of selectmen is to get an affirmation tonight that you, you know, you will, you know, you will raise the idea at going forward that the site should be vacated, you know, how we, you know, how we execute that is.
Maybe Richard, I'd like to drop for a second. It's just back to the complexity of it not being the way you described in terms of cost. Because we're, to move forward and start to get those designs done is a pretty substantive cost, right? Just for the, you know, we have to, in order to move forward, the next step and ask for those designs and drawings and all that, that is a pretty significant cost, correct?
Right. Typical construction projects are both broken into six phases. But in order for us to, as a committee, to feel comfortable going to referendum, there are two phases. But in order for us to, as a committee, to feel comfortable going to referendum, there are two phases in construction that we want to absolutely positively have achieved, and that is schematic design and instruction drawings. Design, actually, design development, so schematic drawings and design development. Well, those phases would include a lot of investigative work. You know, construction is not what you see that will cost you money. It's what you don't see. And very clearly, what concerns the committee is environmental issues that are buried underneath the surface that we may run into. Some things that are buried there that we don't know were buried by various operations. And the other concern is the condition of the structural integrity of the soil of of what's below the surface. Those are things we really, absolutely, positively, amongst a whole bunch of other, plus the addition which we know there's environmental issues in the building. There's asbestos, there's PCVs, there's that pain. So we need to, in order to go to referendum, those questions need to be answered. I I don't, I can't tell you what that percentage is. But yes, it is not insignificant, but it's two, two, you know, it's two six or one third of the six phases of a construction project. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Right, but the yeah, the point is it's significant enough, or that's why, another reason we're at this juncture. It's a very significant cost. You know, as you have defined, but it's not insignificant. In order to move on to the next phase, you have to develop that that information.
We we need to know now, as a committee, but also to Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, residents, we know as much as we possibly can know about everything on that site before we put a referendum to avoid the unknowns.
Thank you for.
And and very honestly, if any other project was on any other site, a good constructor, a good construction manager, general contractor, architect would still be advocating doing the same same thing, those two phases.
So maybe a good spot for the board, it's, you know, we'll start to develop some questions or commentary.
Well, I'm sorry with comment. I do love our transfer station. But that being said, I had sent the committee a letter last year. Uh, I think it's it's time for us as a community to look at the costs and potential costs of both maintaining a recycling center the way we do now as opposed to the costs of having trash picked up. There are at least a certain numbers of our taxpayers that uh, live in the North End that don't even come down to the transfer station because of of traveling. So they are paying for their own waste to be picked up. And I I really think time has come for us to look at those costs with everything else going up. Uh, as well as, you know, the payroll, are the the recycling equipment is starting to show signs of age. You have the one compactor that I'm going to say is easily twenty years old. The other compactor is probably, well, fourteen years old now. When those break down, that is significant dollar amounts. Maybe now is the time to just go over the whole house pickup. You know, I'm all in favor of shutting that down. He is totally right. Being construction my whole life. The last thing workers needed be is having to work around other groups. It doesn't work well, having a a citizen population in and around construction sites is an accident waiting to happen. It's not when, it is how, and it will happen. So I I'm in total favor of of both of the things that building committee is re- is requesting. I think it's prudent. It makes sense. And as I say, as we're starting our budget process, I wanted to see an actual cost analysis anyway. Because I'm, I think the time has come. I know I'll probably get hate mail, but the reality is, for the good of the town, cost-wise, I think this would be a prudent move anyhow.
Yeah, I mean, there clearly will be people that will disagree with the approach, but but our job is to bring forward our process in the best interest of the community at large. You know, if knowing that we won't get a hundred percent agreement, so I hope you don't get hate mail. I clearly encourage disagreement. Fine, I mean, we want public input. I mean, that's the point. We want public input.
To that point, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering to go along with your with your comment. Richard, could you explain the thought process? Because I see in your presentation that your committee examined relocation versus reassignment, and I think it would be helpful for the public to kind of hear what your committee found out and what you discussed and why you ultimately went with the recommendation as presented to reassign, you know, how we do our trash.
Well, it was something candidly that the PVC started to hear from when we took our tours back in two thousand and ten eleven, well, the towns were starting to seriously at least look at their costs, and increasingly, we started to hear other, you know, as the years went on, and as our members participated. At one point, we had an architect, and he participated in environmental programs. I participated in a number of environmental programs sponsored by I've rebuilt a substation of America, package, rebuilding, lead. And when there were breakout sessions, one of the things that I started to hear and report back to PVC and then the Department of Public Works Action Committee is municipalities were starting to look at the cost and and really looking at them without prejudice. And really getting, in some cases, some towns simply stepped back and said, you know what, it's, we're okay. Other towns were astounded at the cost. Not only dollar wise, but also something we don't think about, or it really diverts Paul's personnel or other personnel from Department of Public Works, where they're prepping for the trash that's coming the days the transfer station is open. They're dealing with after the the transfer station is closed, those days, they have to either haul dumpsters to the regional trash facilities. And so the charge the committee got a year ago was, we need to think outside the block box. We need to bring back some things to the committee beyond just proposing how to build a new facility in Old Colchester Road. And actually, Andy mentioned a couple of selectmen meetings, though, that, you know, that Paul and I participated at the, uh, so these the celebration of the moving in public, public works new facility. And one of the party, we all kind of walked around and kind of talked to different other DPWs, and there was a comment that I heard from somebody saying, we looked at our costs and why would, why it took us so long to do that? Because beyond me, but we looked at the cost for some, we've now gotten out of the, you know, most of the trash business and recycling. So I think that's all of the committee is advocating that town staff really look at the numbers, and they have to look beyond the numbers, but they also need to get from Paul and Mary Rose, the amount of hours on a weekly basis is that burn up um, relative to the MSW, the trash and recyclables.
And now is the right time, right? Because we're looking at a whole facility, so it now would be the time to to ask too, and 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 I and you don't have to say any, but Paul, our our public director is here, and is there anything, Paul, you would like to add to Richard's comments? Just want to give you the opportunity, if you want to, but feel free if you if you want to. It's important to hear from you if you have something you just to share. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, look.
So thank you so much for, you know, your well-written, properly written piece. I really enjoyed reviewing, so thank you for that. I had a question about personnel. How many folks are working in sort of like the transfer station area that work with public on the on the daily whenever it's open? And I assume that they would be displayed as far as employment, or would they be reassigned within the DPW or another as a different?
I think I'm going to defer to you, Paul.
And what public works, bring him in.
So they won't lose their jobs?
Correct.
And how how many of them would there be?
There's one full-time employee right now.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
I didn't see any comments. Yeah, I, Rich, you are a town treasure. Thank you. All the work that you've put in and and reading through some of the reports from the the committee and from the stuff that you've put forth from the building committee as well. I I would have been one of the people to send you hate mail. I I gotta tell you, I love the transfer station, and I, you know, given the opportunity, I would always vote for choice, the choice of I can either pay for my own garbage or I can have the transfer station, but and 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 I probably would have died on that hill. But I think that some of the points you make are really, really good. Why is it beneficial to have six hundred vehicles bringing their trash to the transfer station when we could have four vehicles going around and collecting it? You know, the environmental impact is much less. People, you know, that may not necessarily secure their trash while they're while they're driving and it's all over town. The possibility of of traffic accidents from additional vehicles coming from the North End. Yeah, a lot of them pay for theirs, but some people do come down. I I have to say I I now support it because yeah, I am an advocate of choice, but there's just so many checkboxes in the pro column. Based off of some of the research and and information that you've put forward, I I really appreciate you doing the legwork and kind of bringing these things up that maybe I was just too obtuse to think about before. I I appreciate your work and the work of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate being, you know, part of the, you know, US Green Building Council, Connecticut Lead. Because that's where I kind of got, you know, there's different seminars, my eyes opened to to some of the advantages of towns really looking at migrating away from what we're doing on Old Colchester Road to the site pickup. Or, you know, that that was the benefit of, well, of some extracurricular education.
So to be clear, we're looking at this as a permanent solution even beyond construction, correct? Or is that something to be deterred? I just want to be very clear with the public exactly what we're going to be moving forward with. Is this being presented as the temporary solution while we are constructing there, or is this the permanent way that we're moving forward? I think it's incredibly important we clarify that for the public.
I agree. I think for all the safety reasons, it's an absolute no-brainer that has to happen during construction. But given the the large amount of information that was presented and and, you know, trying to put my own prejudices aside versus, you know, about choice. I really think I would be pulling in the permanent. You know.
Right, so what we're doing today is as a a board, are we first agreeing uh, with the recommendation that the site and the work that goes forward reflects the site is vacated as presented. That's the first thing. And then the second, so during that, even that construction twelve to twenty-four months, so it would have to be an alternative solution anyway, but because it is most prudent to talk about a permanent solution, we are also bringing forward the concept of permanently getting out of the trash business, so having it be a permanent path forward. Again, this, the public will ultimately decide, but yes. And then the idea of permanency also is because we have limited space, we change the whole scope of the project and reduce the cost, and 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 there's a lot that has to be developed to bring that information forward. But yes, we are talking about those two areas and 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 it would be a permanent. Yes, Andy.
Tiffany brings up a good question, and I hope she'll allow me to elaborate a little bit. We're on that, so. Great work, Richard, always, all these years sticking in there. Thank you. But I think they need direction on how to move forward, so that's what this is tonight, but if after all this work is done, and then for whatever reason, if it doesn't pass at referendum, it's too expensive or for whatever other reasons, then you would still, would you still have the option at that point in time if you kept the site, whether you're going to be out of the trash business or not, if you're not going to construct there? After all the work is said and done.
So right, so if it doesn't pass, even though then an alternative would have to be developed, but still on that premise, so we will be doing it without, we will do it with a solution other than directly handling the solid waste and and the recycling permanently.
So I have no problem moving forward on any of the temporary recommendations, and to be frank with you, that also includes keeping the trucks at Burn Hill, because we simply just don't have anywhere else to put the trucks. But I think if we're going to move in a permanent direction, I need a lot more information. I want like a total cross break. So I just want to be very clear to everybody what exactly.
We're setting a direction that please continue to explore that. This is in, after today, it's a decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, we call it a long-term pilot project.
Well, I think we're, we definitely need to get some actual dollars. Uh, the actual amount of real hours spent down there. We do have, of course, Gordy, who is is there. There are other people who do put in time there. Some who help Gordy, some that are actual town employees. We have the equipment. We just bought a new roll off. Thank you. Roll off truck. That was two something, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was like two years ago.
Yep.
Over two hundred thousand.
Over two hundred thousand, a couple of years ago, and that's a truck that we replace every every, you know, maybe dozen years, ten years, whatever. Uh, we have all the containers. Every year, there's money in for containers, uh, because they they break, they just take a beating. The equipment, so all of that stuff needs to be factored into the dollars and cents. You know, the the hours that other town staff spend, like you're saying, taking to Willimantic and, you know, back and forth. And there's also the fuel. Does it, is it our town personnel that pick up the garbage that doesn't make it to the recycling? You know, I see bags on eighty-five, I see bags out of Old Colchester, you know, those that don't quite make it all the way down. You know.
Right.
You know. Yes, so all of those things. Okay. You know, so all of that kind of needs to get correlated into, you know, the overall cost, and then, of course, we need to know what the, you know, pickup companies are going to charge, whether it's a town or or however that works to go around house to house to house. Uh, I did read, you were saying that they would be two recycle or a recycling and a garbage anister.
Typically, would, where towns migrate from where we are today to herb side herb side pickup for, and it's supposed all the waste or trash would be every week, and recyclables would be every other week. And clearly, if somebody is generating a lot more recycling to fit into the container, typically whether it's all waste or waste management or casella, all a homeowner needs to do is call and say, hey, for whatever reason, I need a second container for my recyclable. The the goal of all of those trash management terms is to get as much recyclable, capture as much out of the MSW, the trash. So if somebody's generating more than what will fit into the typical blue container, and maybe a second, that's not an issue.
But just getting back to Claudia's point, for clarity in yours as well, Tiffany, is agreement that we're moving forward with the with the recommendation for it to be vacated, and that we are going to explore and provide information associated with a a transition long-term solution. So that information is forthcoming, but we're going to explore that and bring more information back, as opposed to say the board said, no way, no, huh, that we're not going to do it, then no more work is done on that. But the idea that we should move forward as a town and and committees and appropriate committees to bring that information forward, um, to continue to discuss its merit.
Just didn't want anybody
It's a discussion, and we're asking for more information because we think it has enough merit that we need some additional information to assess that.
And are we, are we going to discuss, or do we want Richard to just speak to very briefly the truck storage situation while the site is vacated? Because that is generating.
Right, we're getting, right, so it's, right, I think that's a good idea. The idea that when we were exploring, the committee, uh, Right, we're getting some, right, so it's a, right, I think that's a good idea. The idea that uh when we were exploring, the committee uh you wanted to look at were the viable options. You know, here's an example, what are viable options, where we could move staff, where we can move trucks, the viable options. So one was presented. Um, so.
And one thing I want to be very clear on, the, those eleven items, that was town staff collaborating and and offering. And there was a whole litany of things that were considered and for various reasons rejected. I did not include that in the document. But I would say this, if there are things as the board is selecting, you're through that you that you have concerns over, I would absolutely encourage you to send them to Andy, but Andy, you know, engaging the appropriate town staff, meet with the committee and and but but, you know, let's talk it through.
Okay, I would think that the relocation of uh personnel and equipment really needs to be orchestrated by town staff. Uh, it it's not the building committees uh charged to try to say where we're going or what, you know, with this here, that there. Uh, this is, this is a headache that our town staff is gonna have to work out and work within, you know, other town uh entities. You know, so uh, you know, there may be some shared sacrifice uh by different town groups to to see this thing to fruition.
Yeah, it will be.
Yeah, and and if I could, I I just think we're thinking outside the box. You guys have done a fantastic job of that leading up to this. And I think you're exactly right, Dan. There are certain things that are more under, you know, the town's regular staff purview to figure out the logistics of it. But I also want to get us away from the mind frame of a silver bullet. All or nothing. All or nothing is not gonna fix this. We need to find a way to split these down into, you know, manageable chunks. And if that means two trucks go to fire station one, two trucks go to fire station three, one truck ends up here, one truck there. Because it's pretty hard to find a place for fifteen trucks, but it's real easy to find a place for fifteen trucks.
Fifteen places for eight.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's right. And I I think just.
Here you are. I'm gonna double my driveway.
You do.
My daughter would love.
Okay, every board of select member gets a chuck. Yes, right. So um, so two things. One, just for those that might be engaging for the first time, just out of for transparency, I also serve on the Department of Public Works Action Committee. So these recommendations that are coming forward, um, I do support. Um, so since everyone else has weighed in, I just, for those that may be tuning in for the first time, just for transparency there. So Richard, maybe just uh to to Tiffany's point, a little context on 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 how, you know, the the thought process behind, hey, what can we do at Burn Hill? Because it's come up. Um, what about moving the staff? What is, just maybe a little commentary on that and and Paul, if you want to jump in, please do so.
Yeah, if you want, I mean, I can go through the the narrative of the the eleven or.
Well, I mean, if you can comment, I mean, whatever you, whatever you're comfortable doing.
I mean, I was gonna say Paul and his Mary Rose were three options that became available when talking with staff. There there's space here. Develop. There's space at uh Horton House and also Firehouse too.
Yep.
Which is for all intent and purposes is vacant mostly. So that that one was, you know, was easy. You know, the trucks were something that we spent a lot of time on. You know, we 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 looked at, and Matt was a tremendous resource. He pulled, he has a lot of, you know, a lot of contacts within the town of various commercial properties that had space. I won't add them, I don't want to, we looked at, but there were, and he reached out and he wa, you know, he walked and he took pictures, he brought them back to the committee and said, here's the property, property A, here's what's available, owners agreeable, but here's the issues, you know. Interest of properties on curve. We got deep heavy trucks that are trying to go again. Um, there's sightline issues. So you know, the evaluation of each one of the properties or each one of the options were just not busting off the list was really intensive. We started our work the first week of April. We met regularly and routinely through the end of July. Right, you know, this wasn't something that we staff just said to myself and the rest, here's, here's the solutions we came up. They were, they were thoughtful, they were, you know, they were, they were, they were vetted. And I will operate, it's not like what we put forward, this is it, take it or leave it. We want to build consensus. And so as I mentioned, if there's something that really from the board's selection standpoint, really is something that we should maybe go back one last, by all means, you know.
Oh, yeah, so now you're part of the, so if you want to add to Richard's comment.
We, we talked about this in depth, and what's in front of you tonight, what's important to us, the committee, is that you can make a decision and vote on whether you're going to vacate or you're not gonna vacate, because if you don't do that, we're stuck in the water. We can't do anything else. The, all these other things that we're talking about are really, we aren't the experts on them. I mean, we certainly can be part of the conversation. But town staff has to decide where the services go, whether we outsource them or we don't outsource them temporarily, temporarily. Um, and we can be part of that discussion, but that should be led, in our opinion, in the committee's opinion, by the town staff. Will help, will participate, but we don't know the the issues. We had a meeting today with Ram and they're talking, we were talking about a few uh items, the generator that we're we're working with them to put in isn't gonna be able to go in next summer. So they're talking about, oh, we'll cut it over during Christmas vacation. Well, did anybody ask the uh administration at Ram if the building is closed? And so we posed the question to the uh one of the Ram participants and they said, oh, place is Grand Central Station. So they know, our town staff knows a lot better than we know where the appropriate place to put these things are. The discussion on on uh uh the park was because it came across the table as Richard already uh, but I mean, Keith, you came up with some things Richard and I were talking about, piece them out, put them in different places. Now, I know that's not convenient for for all, but everybody, and Tiffany, I think you said it, everybody and and Peter said it, everybody's gonna have to give a little here to get a better facility for for our employees and a safer facility. So that, I mean, that's essentially what I have to say. But uh, and and we appreciate all the support that you've given us over the years we've been working. It's even me, I've got years on it now. Um, but we really need you to make a decision as soon as possible on vacating or not to vacate.
Oh, so I'd say the the benefit of vacating the site is construction schedule at that much shorter.
Yeah, yeah. And plus, shorter, safer, less expensive.
Safer and less expensive are the two reasons that that you should have in mind.
What are we looking at for a time sequence? You know, uh, I mean, is this something that we're looking at within the next three months, six months? Is there any kind of a an idea?
To to what?
Well.
Uh, referendum?
Well, to ex, to needing uh this to take place.
The site being vacated?
Site being vacated.
Richard can address that. I think he did mention.
Well, I think, I want to answer a question, question, I mean, it appears that we have the answer to question number one. Question number two, we we need to get an answer to whether we should, you know, handling the trash and recyclables at Old Holchester Road. And then we can get the the RFQ, you know, out and start the process of interviewing architects. And then, you know, really start to push on when when the Pega referendum. And what I would look to Andy and the board of selectmen. Nobody knows better the gauge of residents and what would be an opportune time to bring this referendum. We know bringing a referendum this summer, you're gonna have people that are not gonna be able to participate. We want to be able to articulate the plan, have plenty of time to be with stakeholders. So I think it's kind of like kind of leaving the question back, what would be the most opportune time of year to have a referendum worked backwards? I mean, ultimately, we're looking, as I said, the best thing to do to be least disruptive to the town and to fall, start construction in January, real hard construction mid-March. And it'll be significantly, they call substantially complete of the project by end of the year, by December, January.
So we really have to target a referendum, Andy, for probably this spring?
There's another whole component of this that has been discussed and malnourished. Is I would have to get with bond counsel and then have to lay that out once, how much money we're gonna borrow, how we're gonna pay for it, what the, what the uh percentage rate of the borrowing is. All that would have to be very precise, along with a timeframe for the approval and a referendum. So you might, it's just a suggestion, you might, you're gonna need to spend some money to do what you're talking about now, to move forward. You might want to have a town meeting to make sure to get your input for the transfer station. I mean, I think vacating is, there's no other option. I don't think you need to push back with that, but if you're talking about the you know, transfer station and and the kind of money you're gonna have to spend to pay these people to do the design work, I think you wouldn't want to get some fingerprints on that. But as far as the referendum, there's a whole other component of compiling how you're gonna pay for it, on bonding, uh, the timeframe, if we're gonna lump any other project, all that's a lot of work that's gotta be completed and done.
So one of the things that we can obviously continue to discuss as a board is that I think at some juncture, we need to set a target uh at at least a a hope, an expectation that we're gonna bring it by a certain date, because if not, we'll be here a year from now still talking about, and I don't want to do that. Um, the public is at a point now where they want to weigh in on this. And so at some juncture, we should put a targeted referendum date and then then you can give us feedback as to can we work backwards from that, what are we able to do that?
I think what we, we, we would need to know what the cost of the project was gonna be, and then that's kind of working backwards as well. And then we can say, okay, this is fifteen to twenty million dollar bill. Is that something that's gonna, I I I think the short answer on that is, as Richard said, we have the RFQ prepared to go out. That can go out whether you decide to marry or not. What can't go out is the RFQ, the request for proposal for the design work. Because unless we know that we're gonna vacate or we're not gonna vacate, we can't, we can't get involved in. Once that goes out, you you're probably looking at a six week timeframe between you give us the go and when that, when the RFQ can go out and if you give us the go, it can go out as an RFQ, RFP, which we have done before. They send back the RFQ and the RFP together, we review the RFQ. We get a short list, those RFPs we look at, and then obviously, we present to you the lowest qualifying bidder. That we probably can get done by, i- if you were to decide tonight, by the end of the year.
Absolutely.
Now, Andy's piece is the one that's really variable.
Okay.
The, trying to get through bond, bond counsel uh and such, and then we would have to at some point go to the state just to make sure that they're comfortable with, or Andy would have to go to the state to make sure they're comfortable with all of the uh uh, the things we're doing. One thing you you need to keep in mind is, we have no idea, as Richard already said, what's underground and what's not underground. Uh, and that could really, really skew the price here.
Yes.
But so if we were, if we were able to get a design professional involved, we probably could have a design in six, six, I think they were saying six to nine months.
Yeah, six to nine months.
So we're looking at next fall at at opti- optimally.
Okay.
You know, don't write this down because if something comes up in the middle of it.
No, but it's better than than an expectation of over twenty five, you know, twenty five, you know, it's gonna be.
And and that also gives town staff time, uh, not me, not to the very end, but it gives the town staff time to determine temporarily where everything's gonna go. It's fall time to figure out where he's gonna be able to do maintenance, things like that. So I'd like to start tomorrow. But you know, the reality is, is we probably aren't gonna have everything we have. And by the way, Richard went through the two, the one third of the design steps. Those are required to get what we need for Andy to get a price. We have to get through schematic design and design development in order for whoever we select as the designer to be able to come back and say, this is what we think it's gonna cost you. So, you know, and Andy can't do much until he has that.
So how long would it take to put some numbers behind um the cost of running the transfer station and sort of the the things you talked about?
Well, that we should have before budget. We can make the temporary motion to vacate, and that could be followed up once we had some hard numbers.
Well, yeah, I think we can do the vacate piece tonight. I think the other piece, I'm asking, how long does it take to, you think it would take to develop?
We could, we could do it for a budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I I wish, Andy and I, Andy and I looked at this two years ago.
Okay.
And two years ago, it was gonna cost us hundred forty six thousand dollars based on thirty seven hundred, thirty five hundred households to pick up, go, pick up uh MSW every week and uh recyclables every other week. And I think it was twenty five cents a week extra if we wanted to do recyclables every week. That year, we had already spent two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in tipping fees.
Okay, okay.
That doesn't include manpower. So, and I mean.
Right. An exposure.
Well, we're just, it's pretty easy to do.
So that we can do, okay.
Cost, what it costs to do it and what I'm gonna charge you to do it.
Yeah. Okay, so let's um, I I recommend when someone disagrees, I I like to um uh make a motion that we uh agree to move forward with the with the project based on the assumption that it will be vacated during the construction project.
I have a quick question, if I can, if you want to hear public comment on this topic. Do you want to wait until after we vote on the motion or do you want to hear it now? That would be the only question I have.
I, I I haven't heard whether, I I don't, I'm not hearing any reason why we would ever disagree with that based on sort of the expert assessment of that, but if if the board wants the public.
I'm just asking, does it matter to me?
Hold on, I just.
I think we can get it out of work first.
Okay, I think that, that, that's all I'm proposing. I'm not proposing anything else. I'm just hoping that to get that off the list. And I'm sure a lot of the discussion will be more around the other areas of 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 concept, but are you okay? All right. So I will make that motion that uh we agreed to at the project um of reflected of of vacating the the premises during the construction phase. And uh, that's the motion if that.
Second.
Second, I need the discussion on that motion. Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or if you just, please note that as well.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
He's got it, aye.
Tiffany Tealy, aye. Gloria Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye, that motion passes unanimously. Now, I think it would be a good time to move to listening to proper comment for those that wish to comment specifically about anything pertaining to the public works. As a reminder uh to the public, there is a public comment section at the end. So uh, if if your comments do not pertain to the Department of Public Works topic, please wait until the end so we can move on to the balance of the agenda. And again, as a reminder, three minutes, please, per comment. So um, uh, Dory, are those, uh, I see, um, this one, I think Lily had.
Okay, a comment.
Okay, Lily, go right ahead. We'll start with the virtual folks first.
Do you have a view?
Lily, are you on mute?
Yeah, she muted.
We still, we can't hear you, we can't hear you, Lily.
Lily, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry. Hold on one second, Lily. It's an hour, so just a moment. Sorry, Lily, give us a moment, please.
Nobody mutually, Lily, wrong.
And I said, I, we shouldn't need you ever, ever, Lily, but I got, I got outvoted.
Do you need help, Dory? No, she should be.
Oh, no, she's still muted.
Is it on her end, then?
She's still muted.
All right, I think I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Lily, please go ahead.
So, um, my comment, I understand the need to.
Sorry, just for the record, please, just your full name.
Look them road, um, Hebron. And, um, I'm super impressed with the work of the Public Building Committee. Um, and the Department of Public Works Special Committee, I forget its official name, but I do have a concern. And that is the proposal to temporarily relocate to Burn Hill Park. My concern is that relocating public works to Burn Hill Park has been previously been determined as unsafe. So why is it now safe? And if it's safe now, why not make that a permanent location? Thank you.
Thank you. Dory, others? Okay. Um, those in attendance. And.
Yeah, the X icing.
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's America.
Yeah, throw the bucket of water.
Put on your bulletproof.
Uh, Ken Darden, Angela Lanning, Hebron, um, also the Chair of the Parkmark Commission, but I'm thinking of the individual tonight. Uh, good evening, thank for allowing me to speak. Uh, I also want to. Express our appreciation to the committee, the, of works, many action committee, for all the work you've done. And I fully support the, became the site I totally agree that's safe as planned, you could do, so I'm here to talk about that. I'm here to make a plea to keep the public works out of Burn Hill Park, even on a temporary basis. Uh, please don't destroy the park. Even sports, and it's such a beautiful recreation facility at Burn Hill Park. There's always something happening at the park. It's utilized by multiple leagues, including baseball, football, soccer, and lacrosse. They have practices, they have games, it's kind of going all the time. We frequently see going compliments from, uh, visiting coaches and parents talking about how great the field conditions are. Uh, and the Parks Department doesn't accept a job maintaining Burn Hill Park as well as, uh. All the other athletic fields in town. Every day you'll find people walking their dogs in the park, or, um, hiking trails, or doing yoga in the building, and it's, it's, they're very busy even during the daytime. Hebron Day is held there annually at the park. So there's kids' rides, there's musical trucks, all of that, hopefully maybe there's, and there for Hebron Day. Uh, this year, there's over two thousand people, which means that there are cars parked everywhere. They're on the east street, they're, they're all over, so I'm not sure if there'd be room for, for town trucks also. Uh. We also host, uh, the Easter Extravaganza, Halloween Truck Retreat, which had over a thousand kids in it. And the five K road base, so there's a lot of things happening at the park all the time. Um. I. Did you made the comment that, you know, safety is a concern, I've heard that throughout the evening, safety is a concern. I think that's a big, I'll speak consideration deciding where the trucks are gonna be. Uh, I just like there's room for public works at Burn Hill Park. Um, but as I said, parking is overflowing during many of the games. Just worried about traffic flow, uh, coming and going, there's only one entrance to the park, so you're talking about, you know. Parents and trucks passing each other, uh, kids running around playing on the field. It doesn't sound like a safe, safe plan to me, and I know, you know, her comments that it's your decision, Tom, Tom's app, decisions on dress, and testing you on this. Um. Also, I don't think there's room because most of the non-utilized open space is wetlands, it can't be utilized. That's why the park is played out the way it is, is, there's a lot of space, and you think there's room to grow, but most of that land you can't, can't use. Um, and I don't think the roadway was designed for large truck traffic, maybe periodically, but not every day. So I think Hebron residents, uh, continue to benefit by the actions taken by what has left been twenty years ago, when they bought that land and decided to make a beautiful park. Uh, and. And families have enjoyed it over the years, so. As you said, you know, Hebron's fortunate, it's actually a beautiful facility at Burn Hill Park, please don't spoil it by relocating color works there even on a temporary basis. I think this other old friend is appropriate, would appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Other folks in attendance that would suggest this topic. Yeah, sure, come on.
Stand on, yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, everybody, I'm Tom Maloney, fourteen Richardson Drive, that's close proximity to Burn Hill Park. Uh, public comments, and just a few clarification questions, but thank you, uh, Mr. Tarny, select men, select women, all your staff. Um, making Hebron such a nice place, and we should live. A nice presentation, Mr. Steiner, and I think as an engineer, I'm happy we're all on board with safety being top priority. And, uh. For DPW, thank you, Mr. Havich, I did the information from the River East, um. Why it's not always so easy to find, maybe just a couple of clarification in terms of, of Mr. Larson about picking up, having trash pickup. And. I don't feel like always does today, you mean we would, uh. Not bring that trash, say, to garbage collection trucks to a transfer station in Hebron, somewhere outside of Hebron?
Well, if, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
It's frustrating to me, the public comment is intended for you just to make a comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But what we, but if you make your comment with your question, we can clearly come back and give you some more.
Yeah, yeah.
Or no, yeah, it, it, or we can have Andy, but please feel free, but if you don't mind just.
Mine, mine are really clarification.
Okay.
And I don't need to tell you where I stand up for Burn Hill, but, um, uh, maybe I'll set that up later, we'll, we'll, thank you, guys.
No, no, you, but you, no, no, if you have, like, if you're, if you have, uh, at least present your question, and then we can have Andy, uh, address it, yeah, but later. But I just wanna, I don't wanna, uh, limit your conversation.
Question is, um, are you proposing something like always does today? Um, get our trash, we'll take it somewhere, or are you proposing we take it to the new transfer station? Are you proposing we take it outside of Hebron or keep it in Hebron to a new transfer station, that's the question.
Okay.
And then the other question would be, have we asked surrounding towns if we can use their transfer, uh, station, or any, I figured you did. And then in terms of process and decision-making, is that we talked about a referendum. Do you the selectmen vote on, on? Which option we will undertake, or is that by? After their vote, is that you, Mr. Tarny, who makes the decision?
Yeah. The bond council will give us a recommendation, and we'll give it to a select to approve this under referendum.
Okay.
Along with the town attorney.
That's all, thank you.
Would you wanna make a comment about the Burn Hill? I mean, since.
Uh, 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 just about everything, uh, we're talking about here today, which, um, are we gonna? Um. Uh, handle this, uh, whole. I'll say refurbishment or replacement of the transfer station.
Some more information, okay.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, when, when the decision is managed, we're just asking, who is the decision maker?
Okay, okay.
You can email me and I'll respond, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your understanding of that, of that process.
Todd Hobbick, ninety-eight East Street, uh, for the record, I am part of the DPW Action Committee. Um, I just want to clarify a few things, um, unanimous, unanimously voted, uh, at the meeting. Um, it was taken out of context earlier by the gentleman speaking. Unanimously to move off-site. Unanimously to visit the idea of town-wide trash pickup. Not unanimously do everything, it was on. The minutes that were presented, which was sort of what I took away from gentlemen who called earlier's comments, that they're gonna merit. Um. I joined the Action Committee so I'd be in tune with what's going on. And sort of have a firsthand handle on what's happening around here. So I agree with everything that Richard has proposed as far as moving off, because it's dangerous to try to work. Get insurance, construct, anyone that's done, done any work anywhere, lived in your house while it's being remodeled is ridiculous. It's not happening. Um. There are multiple other locations that I haven't heard mentioned, which I'm sure, uh, maybe Richard is aware of. But Saltbox Road has some space, the ball field on Old Polchester Road is right down the road. Uh, these are all temporary facilities, so they're not gonna be used forever, but they are land that we do use. So I. And, and, uh, the elephant in the room, we bought Johnny Horton Boulevard. I would think there'd be some way to use some of that temporarily. We're gonna put in, in infrastructure and do a bunch of work anywhere, move these trucks and equipment and buildings and things for people to work out of. But. Let's do something Johnny Horton Boulevard, at least put a road through and a parking area, so you can see some of these. Things that we're talking about that nobody is, can find. So, um. When this park has been run at Burn Hill Park, I'm opposed to anything happening there. With trucks, with equipment, I worked construction for many years. Filcon Tommaso's front. Black placards always said, watch that child. It's my understanding, and they had an incident with a child with a dump truck or a big truck. And so that was their motto for safety, watch that child. We have a park full of people, it's not a good mix. And I, and for one, don't envision that happening. When that park was a concept. Uh, I lived there when it was a chicken farm, when there was horses across the street, when the chicken trucks used to haul eggs out of there. Thousands of people in trucks, that was chicken farm trucks, you know. So when that park became a park, there was discussion of lighting the ball fields. That was a no-go with the residents and zoning at that time. So I've heard mentioned that in order to have the trucks there, they need to have it lit so they can see what they're doing at the park. All things that are very concerning. I'm all set, my time is up, thank you, I got your. And one access, one egress. Horrible. Speeding on that street is horrible as well, getting to and from the event.
Others that wish to offer public comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, uh.
That's for the folks. That's for the folks.
Been at least a couple of years before I spoke before the board, and I think this issue has been around for a couple of years, am I right?
Maybe, so, it is. You gotta name yourself and your address.
Okay. My name is Rick Mars, I live at, uh, one oh two Waswood Row, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. The Action Committee, the Building Committee, I can't even imagine. What? It's unbelievable what they have done in this, um, window that they've had. Um, this thing sounds like it's unfolding as we're talking about it, am I right? Um. You're talking about relocating a, an existing facility that's ongoing and putting that. While you're constructing, you don't even know what the parameters are, or what this is gonna look like finally. So this is a huge thing, I doubt if it's ever been done before like this in Hebron. I don't think so. But my point is, and to make it, uh, to what Mal said too, everybody's gonna have to take a little hit. Uh, you might have to relocate several locations, which would be inconvenient. But hopefully in the long run, we get what we need. Uh, because the facility on there is awful. I mean, it's, it's deplorable, it was built, what, nineteen sixty-seven, it's beyond its life, time for a new facility. Um, but that being said. Place the relocation in places that are gonna have less effect on the most amount of people. Burn Hill Park. We all know that's not a good idea. If you got the Peters House there, you've got, uh. You got, uh, even baseball, even lacrosse, even soccer, not to mention all those big community events are there. So, um, it's gonna be a challenge, again, uh, to do this. And, uh, I think we've got the right people in place to get it done. It's just that I really, really, really hope that you don't go into the park and make such an impact. With all those kids and all those events there. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Other folks in attendance.
Steve Captain, zero, ninety-two East Street. Uh, my family has been on East Street for close to forty-five years. Uh, when you could go out on East Street, stand in the middle of East Street, and no cars would come by for an hour. Honestly, we did it. To the point where my wife and I like to take a walk from ninety-two East Street to Burn Hill, and we take our lives in our hands, so. I just wanna say I'm a hundred percent against anything further going into Burn Hill Park. Uh. Talk about accident waiting to happen, uh, that would do it, I think, so, that's just my comment, you know.
Thank you very much, appreciate you. Others, anyone else?
Sorry, this is my first time, stand on the X. Right, I'm, uh, my name is George Cackey, I'm at sixteen Richardson Drive. Um, I'm just gonna keep this short and sweet, um, uh, basically, uh, from what I'm hearing. Um. For the land, the chicken farm was purchased to make a park. My understanding is, is that we purchased a parcel of land for a place to locate. The DPW. Right, so, I guess I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not asking, looking for an answer. Something to consider about, uh, why are we putting DPW on the land that we purchased for a park? When we purchased land for the DPW? All right, um, the other thing is, uh, some other random thoughts regarding the number of topics that were talked about tonight. Um, I personally, I love the idea of the garbage cookup. But I know that there are a lot of folks in town, being a rural town, that have very long driveways. You, you never, you don't even see that, so. For me personally, it'd make me happy, I have a feeling there's a lot of people out there that, that would not be very happy about that. Um. I. I know that. Following up on, I forgot who, who made the comment that we're all gonna have to probably give a little bit to make this happen. Um, my main concern is with, with the use of, um, I was looking at the, the documentation. Um, there is a mention of using, of putting a refueling facility. My, my concern is mostly, uh, environmental. I personally am downhill. I have a brook that goes to my property that flows off of Burn Hill Park. So, uh, and, and the other thing is, the south, south in the town is fed by. Um. Uh, is, has, we call it, um, city water, like, they, they don't have wells. We have wells. Right, so in our end of town, right, so while soil contamination is obviously concerning anywhere. We are dependent on our groundwater. Right, so the idea that. I, I, I can't even, you know, and I know that it would be appropriately designed. And everything to follow deep, deep standards and everything like that, but the idea of having gas, or, you know, gas diesel tanks. Uphill for me is. Uh, I, I'm just gonna stop there. Um, I think that's about it, I had a couple more, but I can't remember, so, thank you very much.
Okay, if you think of other things, they, feel free to send a note to Andy. Yeah, and, and we'll be happy to respond, so if you think of it later.
Yeah, okay.
Please, we, we welcome the comments.
Thank you.
We're just together, uh, who else, anyone else, I should say, excuse me.
Are there any letters to be read in?
You're stealing my thunder, I had it right here.
I just was asking.
Oh, there is, still can look right there. I am gonna do that, I was gonna do that last, but yes, I have it here, in all seriousness. Um. I, okay. Uh, I don't.
I did get a comment, it wasn't, the thing was, set up my cell phone, but it's pertaining to this issue.
Okay.
From a resident.
Okay.
And the question was asking about if we're gonna vacate, uh, DPW. What, what's gonna happen with the dog pound, that wasn't discussed, so. That question came up due to this presentation.
Yeah, we're definitely going, need to discuss that, those live animals.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, right, that's, that's the fact of the complexity of what has to happen.
It was from the. Dog, dog warden.
Oh, what we're gonna do with the dog, and we don't, the answer is we don't know, right, we don't know yet, and that's cool.
Yeah, at this time, but if we're gonna vacate.
Right, we'd have to deal with the dog.
And I just spoke, there are options.
Okay. Uh, anyone else, and I do have a letter, so anyone else that we agreed to read for the record, through the, the individuals in the building to attend. Um, so I will go forward and read that, um, this, uh, is from Holly Havik, ninety-eight East Street. Even, and, uh, again, she asked, she wrote a letter and asked based on her inability to attend if we could read that, and we agreed to do that, because again, this is a little different. And that we really do wanna solicit as much public input as we can, because of all the reasons that we talked about, so I will read that letter into the record. Uh, addressed to Tom Andrew, Andy, and the Hebron Board of Selectmen, thank you for allowing the opportunity for this letter to be read into the record during the public comment section of tonight's meeting. My name is Holly Havik, I reside at ninety-eight East Street, I live two hours before the entrance to Burn Hill Park. I'm ready five, and I'd like to express my disappointment and frustration that the Department of Public Works Action Committee will be seeking the board of a selectman's permission to move bulky waste bins and heavy trucks to Burn Hill Park. And frustration that the Department of Public Works Action Committee will be seeking the Board of a Selectmen's permission to move bulky waste bins and heavy trucks to Burn Hill Park. As a resident of Hebron and a homeowner on East Street for twenty five plus years, I would like to point out that East Street cannot handle the increase of traffic this situation will bring. More importantly, Burn Hill Park is filled to capacity with children every day. The bulk of our town, excuse me, the bulk of our town, sport, sports teams use Burn Hill Park for practice fields Monday through Friday. And those same towns, sports teams host out of town teams for games on Saturdays and Sundays. Having heavy equipment in the bulky waste recyclable bins to this location is an unimaginable danger. To all our children and a huge liability to the town. Burn Hill Park has one access and one egress. The heavy equipment for towns. People with trucks overfull of bulky waste will need to travel through the bulk of the park to a, a, access the bins. This park is utilized to its capacity after school, evenings and all day Saturday and Sundays. Numerous individuals use the park during the workday as well. There isn't a time that loads of parents, children and vehicles won't be using this park for what it's intended passive recreation. While I completely understand the trials of trying to utilize the current old Holchester Road site for an upgraded DPW facility. There is no reason to overburden our town facilities during this process. I recommend moving on a temporary basis, temporary basis in quotes, these necessary components of the DPW to the original site that was purchased for this specific reason. The main concern from the residents of Kenny Road was relocating the salt shed to their neighborhood. Bulky waste recyclable bins and storage of heavy trucks is not a salt shed. Needless to say, there also shouldn't be swarms of children habitually running about this location. To this letter not highlight the dangers of this option enough for the board, I ask that the town attorney be consulted to measure the risk. Benefits of such a move. Thank you for your service to our town, and again, thank you for the opportunity to be included in the public comment section of tonight's meeting. And that is her letter, so thank you for the letter, and are there any other comments? That came up? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Paul Horst, Paul Horst Director, twenty eight Philston Drive. The reason why we chose Burn Hill Park as. Part of our. Locations is because of the facility that's located there. We need a facility where we can work on trucks. During a snowstorm. Also to get equipment in the middle of the night to go cut trees down. So basically, that's the reason why we chose that spot. I understand everybody's concerns about fuel. Lighting and stuff like that, and then I'm also, you know, we can bring our trucks and put them in other locations. During events and stuff like that, but basically we need the facility to. Fix equipment at nighttime and stuff like that. That's the reason why. That's one of the sites chosen. So, just wanna clarify it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Other comments? Related to the DPW East topic?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say. And I would, I would like to see. Potentially all of these. Comments put into a question form with answers. At this juncture, no one has said, you know, we are moving to anywheres. It's all. Ideas, it's all possibilities, it's all. Being discussed, but there have been no decisions. I, I keep. Getting, getting this, this idea that people are saying, well, this is already done. It's not. Nothing is further from the truth at this point. Just trying to brainstorm ideas, and, and I think it's important that people. Realize, comment yes, but I think we need to get answers out to their comments. Or their questions. Only because I've seen other topics in town. Grow a life of their own based on inaccurate. Assumptions or inaccurate what people think are facts which really are not. And to try to stop that before it gets started. I think we need to.
Yeah, that's a great one, and we have two things, if I may, two things to respond to that. One, within the Department of Public Works Action Committee, there is a subcommittee that is handling communication, and we are meeting as a group next week, and that will be clearly. A big part of our conversation since how do we bring a succinct. Addition to our FAQ that addresses some of the major issues like. One, you know, the vacant, the vacant issue, so they understand that's a decision that was made, and two. That we haven't made a decision on the other things, it's we're opening the dialogue. And again, encourage people to respond and participate and bring their comments forward, but their decisions have not been made, so. That's one thing, where that, that we, we have a section now on the town website. That has an FAQ section specific to the work that the DPW Action Committee has been doing and try to address some of that. And next week's meeting will be a big part of that. And then another component of our agenda that we'll talk about tonight, nine E, for those that wish to continue to. To join us is our communication strategy as a board, which will focus on. A, a number of things, including social media, and, and how do we bring consistent, accurate information to give the public. The opportunity to comment on accurate factual information, so we can together. Move forward in a way that's responsible and, and on point. As opposed to some of the deviations that you talked about in the past, so, so those two areas, one specifically, the Department of Public Works Action Committee. And their Subcommittee for Communication will be meeting and bringing forward. To your point, and then that also is an opportunity for us as a board to think about, maybe that's the next item that we talked, first item we talked about, the communication team.
I, I just wanna look forward in advance of your, your communication committee meeting. Thank you very much for the additions to the River East, because there is a, a, a small. Well, okay, maybe not small, there's a, a portion of our population that, that is their number one. Source of news, and so, I, I mean, it's great that we have a website that has the Q and A. But, I mean, I have gotten a lot more comments, me personally, since the River East postings than I did. When the website went up, you know, so I'm not saying that you have to, because obviously to get a larger spread and just a. Letter to the editor, we would have to pay for that, that kind of newspaper space. But once you get to a point with your communications committee that you have. A full set of questions or a much more significant amount of information. I mean, I think that it would be a worthwhile investment for us to spend a couple hundred dollars in the River East to make sure that that's posted. I, I just think that there are certain residents in town that would see that as a good investment.
Great, good suggestion. Okay. I think we're at a juncture where. We can move forward off this topic with this time, knowing full well that it will continue to be sitting on old business for money, many months to come. And so, just opportunity to thank those that have joined us and, and the comments, we welcome them. We encourage them, and again, apologize that we didn't have an opportunity for more dialogue. With specific questions, but that's not the nature of, of this meeting structure, but we do encourage you to communicate with. Andy and continue to provide your comments, and if you do have questions, obviously, we're very happy to answer them through Andy's office. And so, thank you for that. Thank you for that participation. So based on that, we're gonna move to, just.
Ready? Did you get? The information that. You. Needed to move forward? Okay. So you don't walk out, so you know, they never address this or this or, you know.
I would be in trouble, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
That question. We have that, and we can report back to the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And thank you again, Richard, and thank you, Paul, and now obviously for adding to the, to the, to the conversation, and, and all those that participated with a public comment, thank you. And Andy, HC, is any other old business, anything else you'd like to bring before board?
Not, Mr. Chairman.
The board's, anything on old business, okay.
Did we wanna, I mean, we passed by our, but did we wanna talk about the dog park, or do we wanna push that to the next meeting, where we dealt more into our?
Let's do that. Let's push it to the, the next meeting. On the dog, since we have a bill, a number of items on new business. But, but let's push that to the next meeting if you're okay.
Okay, okay, I'm just throwing it out.
But let's, so on the agenda, make sure in our, you know, just remind us, Dory, that we need to be talking about the, the dog pound and. And all that, and the dog park and all that.
Hopefully you'll have more answers by next meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you Keith for that. Alright, that moves us to number nine on our agenda, which is new business.
Yes, at Gillian Hill School and Hebron Elementary School HVAC project building committees. Resolution.
Yes, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the Hebron Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education. And to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC project at the Gilead Hill School. Be it further resolved that the Public Building Committee, along with the Board of Education members, Alicia Lemay and Joseph Margitis. Is hereby established as a building committee for the HVAC project at the Gilead Hill School. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings. And outline specifications for the HVAC project at the Gilead Hill School.
Okay. Resolution has been read. Comments?
Before we get into voting, do we wanna vote on both at the same time? I'll just read the second one, too.
You can do one at a time. You know, case somebody doesn't agree, I would.
You need to do one at a time.
Yeah, okay, for that reason.
Okay.
My only question is. Are those the only two members? That are forming the Building Committee, or is our Building Committee also involved?
Those are the two members that have been appointed from the school board, too.
To, to the, with the Building Committee, okay.
Yeah, it says Public Building Committee along with Board of Education.
Okay, okay.
Yes, making sure.
No, you have to appoint all five people, and all five have to be sworn in. Because this is. A separate committee in the eyes of the state.
So do. Does everybody's name need to appear on this?
Yes.
Some of those other ones are already sworn in.
Excuse me?
Where the, the regular, original ones are already sworn in, these are, these are new people.
This is a separate committee. If you read the state statute. There has to be a book, or you read the preparation paperwork for. Any grant, any building grant. A separate committee has to be assigned. We wanted to do a permanent committee, and they would not allow that.
I was under the impression that the people that run the Building Committee were already approved, and these two people needed to be added.
Take a friendly amendment, go to add the three members of the Building Committee, please. And so with that friendly amendment. And the resolution being read, is there any discussion? Although, if they're considered by by saying aye, those opposed nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well.
Dan Larson, aye.
You said aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, I have a resolution passed unanimously with that friendly amendment. Thank you so much.
And be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorizes the Hebron Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education. And to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC project at the Hebron Elementary School. Be it further resolved that the Public Building Committee, do you want me to read them off?
Oh, I hope amended with their individual names. Oh, you have that? Oh, okay.
Wayne Warwick.
Okay.
Richard Steiner and Malcolm Leichter. Along with the Board of Education members, Alicia Lemay and Joseph Margitis. Is hereby established as the Building Committee for the HVAC project at the Hebron Elementary School. And be it further resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation. Of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC project at the Hebron Elementary School.
Thank you for reading that. Resolutions are read, any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, that is aye.
Thank you.
Tiffany Tilly, aye.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, I have a resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to C on our, I'm sorry, B, nine B on our agenda, which is awarding the contract for the. Gilead School, Hebron Elementary School HVAC IAQ upgrade. Any's anything there you wanna add?
No, I just, for the viewing public, this is nine. Nine B award contract for Gilead Hill School and Hebron Elementary School HVAC IAQ upgrade professional mechanical electrical engineering firm. Let me show the people up there to hear it.
Thank you. All right, if anyone wanna read the motion, then we, then we'll move the discussion.
I'll take these two.
Okay, thank you.
Moves that the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the contract for the HVAC assessment for Gilead Hill School. De Salamon and Associates PC of Wallingford, Connecticut, in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars.
It will take these separately. First motion's been read. Any discussion, anything you. The Building Committee, which has anything here that?
I, I just, I had already asked Mel. When looking through the three proposals. There was a vast dollar difference. And so Mel had given an explanation, and I think it moves. Everybody to know what that explanation was.
The HVAC. Grants are very different. From regular school building grant. School building grant, you can't submit, you can't go to the. To the state and have your plans evaluated until you, you've completed. The. Schematic design and the design development. They then look at your plans, they, they rule on them, so there's a lot of work that has to be done there. In this case, in the case of the HVAC grants. The HVAC grants are so broad and so different, and most importantly, so costly. And so many schools are so far behind. They had, the state put out a list of. You need to be, you need to answer these questions before you can even qualify. Just qualify for this grant. Forget submit your paperwork and get approved for the grant. And in order to do that, we really need a design professional, and Richard's done a lot of research on this too, so. Maybe you could say a few words.
If I understand you correctly, Swipman.
Thank you.
You're questioning the spread?
Yes.
One was fourteen thousand.
Thirty-two and fifty or something?
Yeah, and I. Fairness, I, that, we, we can submit or number three submitter, I said. You're appreciably higher. Than somebody who was number one. You understand the scope? Yes, as we have gone over HVAC projects. But. For Dan's card, you know, we're very, very busy with other projects, both HVAC projects. We wouldn't have done. Move people off the projects, hire people. That was the answer for number, number two and three. Number three is. Was even more busier than number two, so. They were all apples to apples.
Okay.
And just amplify, just for the record, what Mel was indicating. When we solicit, like, for the roofing at the. At the Douglas Library, the roofing at Duell Elementary School. That has to be competitively good. What the State Department of Administrative Services says on the HVAC air quality. You can select whoever you feel most comfortable with. This is contrary to typical procurement policy. Because there isn't a defined scope, however. What the Building Committee did with the Board of Ed, we put together a scope letter. That really defined what we were expecting them to provide as part of their work, so. There's a narrative out there that will be appended to the contract that articulates expectations. But, but the answer question, that's why the number, it was a significant spread on the numbers, it's just. When you open a, even competitive bid, you have somebody who is right where your budget is, and you have somebody who isn't in our space with their number and so on, because. They're just bidding for the sake of bidding.
Okay. Thank you. Boy, would you be so kind as to ask those folks to move along the corner? It's starting to be distracting. There with us, just for a moment, those folks that are listening, you just have some. Some background noise that we're asking to, some folks to ask to move beyond, so that noise doesn't distract the balance of the meeting. This story was very effective. Look at you, you missed your points, we're very effective. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. So the motion, the, it just was for me getting a little distracted.
It is distracting.
Um, so the, the first motion has been read. Thank you, Richard, for the additional information and for the good questions that were asked, so let's. Unless there's further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well, Dan?
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, that is aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, I, the motion passed unanimously, if you, if you find.
Moves that the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the contract for the HVAC assessment for Hebron Elementary School. De Salamon and Associates PC of Wallingford, Connecticut, in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Oh, she's read any additional discussion, or any discussion, excuse me. Okay, and we'll move, based on the previous explanation, we'll move to the. Vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, that is aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, I, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Very much, and thank you, Richard and, and Mal for the additional context. That moves us, Mr. Tierney.
Yes, item nine C on the agenda. Food to Town Clerk's Resort Preservation Grant Application. This is something which every year we've been very successful. As is an application prepared by Fran Valani for the Connecticut State Library Historic District Preservation Program targeted grant. Any amount of five thousand five hundred dollars. A proposal is for archival supplies. Recreation of property map and creations of archival microfilm of map. And then there's a proposed motion we read.
Take that.
Thank you. Good luck in item nine C.
Moves that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the application to the state Connecticut, Connecticut State Library for the targeted grant for FY twenty twenty-five. Store document preservation program in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars. And authorize Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to apply for, accept and receive the grant and sign any necessary documents.
Thank you, Claudia. Motion's been read. Any discussion? Let's move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or if you're abstaining, please note that. Dan?
I'm Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Tierney.
Item nine D, approve. F-F-Y for the year two thousand and twenty-three State Homeland Security Grant Program, Region Three Memorandum of Agreement. That's his memorandum agreement regarding use of federal fiscal. Year funds two thousand and twenty-three State Homeland Security Grant Funding and Custodial Ownership of Regional Assets. And DEMHS, DEMHS Homeland Security, Region Three. This is an annual federal grant of which the town of Hebron, by way of this agreement, authorizes. DESPP and DEMHS to retain and administer grant funds. With Prague proving financial and programmatic oversight.
Claudia, the resolution be resolved at the time of Hebron Board of Selectmen may enter into. With and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents with, which it means to be necessary or appropriate and. And be it further resolved that Andrew J. Tierney as town manager of the town of Hebron is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of. Even Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms. Of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. This authorization is for. Uh, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Homeland Security Grant Program. Resolution's been read. Any discussion? Okay, well, move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Dan?
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Tilly, aye. Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passed unanimously. Tierney?
Item nine E is the Board of Selectmen's communication strategy. Board of Selectmen Chair Peter Casper requests that it be included in the agenda for the selection to begin. Discussion on appropriate social media and other methods of communications from the board to the Hebron community.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for that and the opportunity to discuss. Uh, it, it's. Uh, an opportunity for us as a board to engage uh. In the, in the, in social media and to make sure we have a communication strategy that gives the folks within Hebron the best chance to access information. Access correct information, to get corrected to the appropriate place for additional information. And it allows us to fully engage uh, with the public. And so I would, at this point, I'm suggesting that we have a strategy and start to formulate that strategy. Uh, because uh, it's time, especially with such important issues that are facing us now, there's a really a need more than ever. Um, to try to get ahead of it, as you said, or at least stay current. So I would. Uh, ask that Tiffany maybe offer some comments on how you think and obviously then we'll start there and then obviously everyone else can jump right in, but I'll add a few stuff please.
Sure. So, um, this is what I do for a living, right? So I've been in communications for twenty plus years. I was a journalist prior to moving. On the PR side. And what I've been observing lately, just as an outside observer, is that, um, we're not, we're not where the people are enough. And I think the reality is. We need to create some kind of rapid response strategy where we can just communicate to people in these community groups. We made this decision X and the reasoning was X. What's happening is, is I'm seeing that. Stories are getting out there, things are being discussed that are inaccurate. I've gone on my behalf to clarify things even on. Uh, the question of are we having hybrid meetings? Why is everybody virtual? Well, everybody's not virtual. We have virtual software. And so I'm trying to explain that to folks. I think the reality is whether some of us are comfortable with it or not. The average person today, and this crosses age groups, gets their news from social media. They are not reading the riveries. They are not going to our website. Um, I can tell you from a professional perspective, working for a state agency. All of our news pretty much gets picked up on social media. I mean, you know, like the. Like there, there are times for press releases, there are times for advisories, but people are going to social media to get their news. And there are a lot of really terrific, honestly, for the most part, active Facebook community groups that comment on Hebron issues. But what's happening is the board is losing the narrative, right? And so. I've had a conversation with my counterpart on one issue and then I brought it to the chairman's attention and I said. There's got to be some way where we as a board could agree on some kind of rapid response plan where. And you know, someone can draft something for the chair and then someone just pushes it out. And the goal of the rapid response plan is not to get into a back and forth. Unless it's an honest question, right? And so. I appreciate this would probably fall on me because as a comms person, I can tell the difference between. Snarky and legitimately asking, well, was this considered X, Y, Z? But it's going to require, I think, a level of trust and understanding that all five of us can't be involved on every single. Statement. I mean, that is the purpose of rapid response. If I were setting it up with my commissioner. It would be the commissioner and I deciding we go. So all this to say is what I don't want. I don't want misinformation to pick up so much on Facebook and we feel like we're handcuffed and we can't go out there and explain. Why we're making the decisions we're making. There's a time for back and forth on our own time, but just from the board's perspective. Especially today, I mean, you can hear that people really believe that the only option is Burn Hill Park and it is not. And I think that's going to be one of the first things that we're going to want to get ahead of and say, hey, hold on, here's what we actually voted. Yes, it's under consideration, but we're not there yet. So I'll leave it there because that's what I've observed. And I think what I don't want is I don't want, I don't want the board to be the bad guy all the time. Not everybody's going to agree with everything we decide, but I think people in these groups and online need to hear. The decision that was actually made and why we made it. And so I'll stop there and let other people weigh in.
Would you want to start, Claudia? Have any comments?
Um, I, I think this is a very prudent and important discussion to have. Um, as Tiffany noted, we are essentially behind the eight ball and we have been. Um, I think people on this board have been. Their characters have been assassinated, their motives have been in question. When we all know we're sitting here in these chairs. As volunteers and I think all of our intentions, I believe all of our intentions are of highest order. Um, I would never question anyone's value systems or ethics. Um, or moral compass whatsoever, but unfortunately, we have people out there in the ether that are doing that. Um, again, to Tiffany's point, it's not like we're. It's a waste of everybody's time to do the back and forth with folks. However, it is very important that we be. Lack of a better word, aggressive about correcting the record. Stating the facts. Um, and then leaving, leaving them out there as they will and, and as they are. So. Again, we're not going through the back and forth because that's a waste of everybody's time.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Don't engage, right? I'm sure that's like a PR.
Yeah, and you pick, you, you pick and choose when to engage. I mean, certainly. And it's a plan I'm happy to take the lead on drafting if we are interested in moving forward with that because this is what I do. But in any rapid response plan, it's, it's a judgment call, right? And so. You know, I would probably like self-admit, I'm probably the only one on this board that has that kind of instinct to know, okay, that's a legitimate question. They want some follow-up info. And I, I don't mind having it, you know, necessarily fall to me. It's, um. It sounds strange to say I'm on social media all day, but I am. It's part of my job. So it's what I do for a living. Um, so. Yes, you don't always have to choose to engage, but what I don't want is to see a Facebook community group with a hundred something comments just. Laying into us and attacking us and I feel helpless because I don't want to act on behalf of five people. Even though I know it's inaccurate. And so I just selectively picked and, and chose like, no, no, we're, we're in person, but we are hybrid. So people have the option, like this is what we're doing now and so.
Okay, uh, I agree. I've been saying for a long time, we need to do something. Um, I don't do Facebook or, or the, the social media because. It probably wouldn't sit well with my cardiologist. Very.
Media for revenue services.
Oh.
Just saying.
Without, without some explicit expletives, it probably would work well. Um. I think. How, however we respond, it should be. Couple of people rather than just one person taking that board. You know, so, you know. When it comes up, you, you somehow someone needs to be notified, hey, this is what's going on. This is one thing I'm doing. You know, whoever that point person is, or do we try to have somebody from the town? I, I'm not sure. I, that I don't know, but we have to respond because these things are growing lives of its own.
And I think, I think it's not the town. I think it's the Board of Selectmen and I think, I think you're right. And I think whoever might manage it, it's. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen is what should probably start every response. If you have the Board of Selectmen. Just because otherwise it's.
Right.
Like I know as the chair, you as the former chair, you, you, they're looking to pick on a person a lot of time.
Right.
Who's representing. So in this case, on behalf of the Board, it's not Tiffany, it's on behalf of the Board.
Yeah.
Right response. So I don't think it's the town that we have to be out front on that. So the concept of creating this. Communication strategy in this rapid response plan. I'm hearing agreement, Keith. In terms of, do you agree with the concept of having this as a, as, you know, developing a communication strategy?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a pregnant.
I agree. Well, I agree as well. I'm just thinking at this juncture, um, what I was looking for is we all agree that we need to create this.
Yes.
Are we comfortable that we can turn to Tiffany to, to create a, a framework of this for us to then talk about it at our next meeting of. And then start to build like the who and what, where and how.
Well, again, when somebody's doing that in, in, in name of, I think everybody should at least be notified just so we have an idea of.
Yeah, this is going out.
What's happening, not to respond.
Yeah.
Because then you become another uh, un- unreported or whatever.
Well, I think it's, yeah.
You know, this is what was said and this is how we respond.
We're not looking for feedback, but you know, like, we don't want you to be surprised, right? So this is what's going out is an FYI.
Right.
Otherwise, we, we have illegal.
That was my point. It's not that you would never know. It's that there's. Unapproval, like, uh, we're running communications approval processes can be ten, fifteen people deep. What I'm trying to avoid is trying to get out there as soon as possible.
Yeah.
So yes, it's not that you would never hear about it. It's just what a rapid response plan does is it cuts. All the middle people and it's two or three people max and that's it.
So probably something along the lines of, you know, the, the myself as the chair, maybe, you know, at least knowing about it.
Yes.
And, and Tiffany saying, here's the approach.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and then FYI, then we can try it. And if here's the first few iterations, we clearly can come back to the board and say, well. What worked? Yeah, well, yeah, we didn't work, not so much the comments, but the process. We can sort of do the process and you can. Yeah, this is working or this is not working and all that stuff. So, um, so if I may, we'll, uh, it, thank you. Uh, and if you could, uh, bring something together, uh, to Andy's office, uh, prior to the next meeting, so it's on the agenda, whatever. He was to share and then we'll have it as a, 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 an old, or a new business, uh, old business item for next agenda to move forward. Yes, sir.
Great conversation. So. Just for clarification, and as you guys are clearly thinking the right way. As a chief executive officer of the day and the average of town, I'm not allowed to engage a socially purely town attorneys. He said, it's, it's an absolute no, you're not the politician. You're, you're, you're the guy that runs the department. Then you're saying it's going to be screwed, screwed or skewed and you can't. Can't get in the back and forth. So the other thing that would be a concern, and it sounds like you guys already know that. Is it cannot have an illegal meeting. So if you have one point person and you trust them and you want to talk to the chair, that, that's not an illegal meeting. So it's one thing you have to be very careful of.
Yeah.
Hmm. And you would all have to put your trust into someone that, as you stated already, uh, it's the. Behalf of the Board of Selectmen, you're going to have to have that trust. And I think Tiffany's spot on and in today's uh, age of social media. I mean, just, I just, I, I consider myself a very moral person. And the stuff that's being said is just so untrue. And how we're holding up development and not giving out permits when we did just the opposite. We, we went on and above and. It, it's just, and, and I, my wife sits there and reads that stuff and it's, it's hurtful on the weekends and I, I get it. So. The only thing that I would suggest it, and you guys already seen that habit in your, under your hat, is to make sure you don't have an illegal meeting. And so you would have to put some, some trust into, what was your terminology you're going to call this?
Rapid response.
Yeah, rapid response.
Yeah, I just think you would have to be able to talk to somebody that's not elected official, that's a, if it's a topic you don't know about, which you know about most of them. Call myself or whoever the department was to get town planner to get the factual. Bullet points and then if, if you guys agree to that, I think that's, it's time.
I was going to say, I would also want that included because there are times that require. Either specialized knowledge on a specific thing, you know, i.e. uh. Building permit issuances. What, what are the steps, uh, as regulated by the state? For a person to file for and uh, get issued a permit?
Yeah, then there's.
Um, they're, they're very specific and uh, quite literally. By not following the statutes could arrest in criminal sip.
Right.
Actions against the, the entity that should be issuing the permits.
Right. Well, and then there should be a criteria because there's other criteria, like if it's an emergency or something and that falls underneath my office.
Right.
Because I know, I know as new selectmen come and go and they don't know the process in the past. We had, we're really lucky not to have as many tragic things happen at some of the other towns lately, but we did have that tragic fire. And both the. Once that falls underneath the police and the state fire, we can't say anything.
Right.
Yeah.
It has to come from them. So I know when everybody was looking for information, I'm giving information that I can, but I say it can't be sent out and so showing no matter what the rumors are.
And you know, like, A, I know that because.
I know you're not.
For a living. But also, I mean, maybe there's a value in having the board just say that on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, please know. The town cannot release any more information.
Anything that involves fire EMS, um.
Criminal.
Criminal, anything that potentially is a criminal matter, uh, or EMS. Uh, you know, due to HIPAA, you can't give out people's names. You can't give out, uh, any kind of medical information. By law. In fact, there's even questions, sometimes some fire departments will actually post pictures, this and that. And it, it's, it's cutting a fine line because if that auto accident turns into a criminal investigation. It brings a whole nother uh, level of, of uh, scrutiny on the people taking those pictures.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I remember even as fire chief, I get people or even as deputy fire, what happened? Who, what? I can't tell you. I legally cannot tell you. Uh, you know, the names or, or, you know, the, the deposition of what happened. It's, it's against the law.
Well, let's get a framework.
Yep.
Thank you. And then we'll start to sort of dig into some of the nuances and then we'll go from there. But we appreciate that and, and it's, it's time. It's overdue. But it's, but at least we're moving forward at the.
I'm just, I'm frankly, honestly quite, quite tired with some of the vitriol because I think as Claudia said. We're all volunteers and we all know how hard our town staff works. And so I think for me, I've wanted to draft this because I feel a personal frustration. Because I want to go out there and say, actually, that's inaccurate. Here's what the board decided, but I didn't want to do that without speaking to all of you.
So this is great. So let's keep that moving and we'll look forward to next, uh, next meeting.
Em- emotionally, I agree with you. I mean, even though I enjoy bad publicity because without that, I wouldn't get any at all. But, um.
Yeah, but you have dark boards of your picture on them.
No, I wish.
That's it.
That's my goal. No, but, um, you know, I. I, I agree, we need to start working towards a plan. But the, the thing and, and I agree, I think you were best positioned for it, given your personal expertise and, and. You know, your current position. But that's the thing. These positions change.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, just like myself, I'm a current public official, but the fact of the matter is, is that. The next person sitting here may not be. Um, so I. Um, so I am very aware of some of the things that we've talked about, especially the legal exclusions, the FOI, the HIPAA, and the fact that my own personal integrity, I think that as a governmental organization, because I can say whatever I want, it's Keith Pettit, but when I sit here with the four of you, we are a governmental organization.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have a a duty to put out the truth.
Yep.
And nothing but the truth.
Sorry.
And to make sure that we put it out in a way that is free and available to as many of our constituents as possible. So I mean, I know we're focusing on social media, but you know, I'm going to bring up the River East as well if things get to that point.
Mm hmm.
Um, I, you know, I do think we should move forward with the plan, but this is not going to be a one meeting thing. I mean, there's a lot of stuff to talk about here, a lot of stuff to delve into. And I have a lot of hesitation. And that was my hesitation.
Okay, that would be too, that would be too narrow in scope.
Or that he wanted to be in perpetuity, right? Like a plan that anyone could take and run with or?
A lot of that all wrapped up.
Okay.
I have very much trust in in the chair, the current chair as the speaker for the board, and I have a lot of trust in you as a professional with experience in that niche.
Sure.
But I also have a lot of fear of the integrity of this organization possibly being at risk if we don't do this properly. And that's my concern.
Okay.
I mean, my own personal integrity is crap, but.
What are you saying? Or stewards, right, of this sort? And so I want to establish something that
You know, I take that seriously.
Yeah, no, that's right. We should be thinking about that because, as you know, elections, big seats change and all of a sudden
It's changed.
And it doesn't have the same structure or integrity that was intended.
And one of the things that is is bad enough to get the bullseye in your back. But one of the things that's more fresh, at least to me, is you have people that are in charge of these social media pages that answer the questions for you, and they're not giving out the right information.
Right.
We deal with it all the time.
Mm hmm.
Like when the wires run the bus, the wires were never on the bus. They turned and they they turned that into a fiasco.
Yeah.
And I'm like, that never even happened. And next
See, but that's but that's my my number one concern. The first, and and this is why I a hundred percent agree with you. Unless it's about something political, we are not the experts, and we should be getting as much information from the experts before we make a statement.
Yep.
Because the first time we put out a statement that somebody finds is flawed, we're done. We're done.
And we shouldn't feel like we have to comment on everything.
No.
Pick our speed, pick our style that align with something that's important to us.
Yeah.
And and say, and then have the and have the the courage to 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 not touch.
Right.
Certain things that you want to say something, but not in our purview, not not remain to, you know, let them, people can rant and do what they want to do, but we can't, we can't correct everybody.
Yeah, because if
On everything.
If we make a mistake, it will never be forgotten.
Mm hmm.
Ben, if we're too, if we're too aggressive in in our approach, it's going to be probably scare away some some well meaning people.
Yeah.
Um, that we want to actually have, you know, feel that's a good, safe place to get information, even though it's filled with
Right now, we're we're too afraid. We're all trying to not get that he said, she said, and 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 to start the 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 letter wars. But, uh, right. You know, there's no winners in that, but have to get this
You have to have professionalism and integrity. You can only say what's factual or come back and get it. They can say anything they want.
Yeah.
They could, they could skate to say anything they want, which they have.
Right. Right. So we have to be above all that and just continue to direct people with very brief, well, you're the expert, but very brief factual comments, um, that get people at least redirected. And if they choose not to follow that course of accuracy, well, that's their prerogative. But, um, the public should see that we're directing them to the right places. They choose not to go there, that's
Right.
You know, that's their business.
Right.
Okay, so we'll continue this clearly. Um, and thank you for bringing on that very much. And, uh, Mr. Tierney, that moves us to nine F.
This would be the agenda.
Draft agenda for our twenty six meeting. And so as always, um, take a look at the agenda additions, anything you want to change, contact Andy in his office, uh, uh, if you want to add anything on that.
Did you want to add anything with the dog?
We had that. We got that in the communication.
Yeah.
I hope the therapy dog shows up.
Oh, if the dog's not here, take it off the agenda.
I'm going to need therapy.
Yeah. We can't talk about it.
I want to see a dog if I don't see one again for another week. I need to see the puppy.
Yes, now the puppy has to be here. That's
Okay.
Or out. Uh, Gina is out. Um, okay. And so any other, uh, new business, Mr. Tierney, you bring for the board?
I do not.
Any board member wish to bring any new business that has an interest? Okay. That moves us to our consent agenda, which is item ten on the agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and maybe vote on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in the section that requests the chair to remove it for later discussion in a separate vote if necessary. We have the approval of the minutes for August first regular meeting and a series of tax refunds.
Just do, just break it up. I wasn't here last month.
What's on it?
Break it up. Just do the approval in minutes. I can't, I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
You actually don't have to. That's your choice. I can't. No, nobody, you know, I think Tiffany, you don't have to abstain. I mean, you're welcome to. So you want to do two items, the approval of the minutes, so you can abstain.
Yeah.
And then, okay, so we'll break it up into section A. No, no, no worries. And B, and I I just will mention for the record, I am on the approval of the tax refunds, uh, as ten B four. Um, and this all, do you want me to have a moment of silence for my two thousand and seven Lexus? By longer with us. But based on the nature of that, as a routine item, I did get confirmation that I do not have to pull it out separately or abstain uh, specific to the tax refund noted for myself. So, uh, just
Spend it all in one place.
Yeah. What am I getting back? Fourteen?
That's not quite a meal of McDonald's.
I know, yeah.
But anyway, I just wanted the public to recognize, I needed to recognize that I am on that list, and that is why, but I do not have to remove that item based on the routine nature of that transaction. And so with that said, we will, um, move to, um, a vote on the approval of the minutes for August fifth, two thousand and twenty four regular meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, or if I want to be nay, and then obviously an abstention is noted, if you wish to do that as well. Uh, Mr. Larson.
Abstain.
Hey, thank you, Keith.
Keith Pettit, I.
Tiffany Tilly, I.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, I.
Peter Casper, I. I passes for, uh, the, uh, an approval and one abstention. We'll move to, uh, B, tax refunds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed nay. If you wish to abstain, please note that as well, Mr. Larson.
Uh, Dale Larson, I.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Pettit, I.
Thank you.
Tiffany Tilly, I.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, I.
Thank you, Peter Casper, I. That passes unanimously. Move to liaison reports, uh, eleven A, AHNB Services. I did not have anything to report. That moves to the Board of Ed, Tiffany.
They met tonight, so I'll probably have more the next.
Thank you. See you when we go to finance, Mr. Larson. Thank you. Uh, D, Land Acquisition, Mr. Pett.
Uh, the August meeting was canceled, so I believe there might be a meeting in October, but nothing.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, the RAM, uh, Board of Education, Claudia.
I have nothing to report back to me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tierney, is there anything you wish to add in the liaison section?
Um, the Board of Assessment Appeals was supposed to be today. They couldn't get forums. They're going to have to, uh, do a special meeting. It was hard to get those members together. So other than that, uh, that's just an update. I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you very much. That moves us to section twelve on the agenda, which is public comment. Do you have any folks, uh, online that wish to, uh, join us for public comment? Say there's no one else in attendance, um, so, uh, any longer. So we will move to section thirteen.
Uh, move to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting at nine twenty P M.
Somebody else would like to second?
Second. I was going to say for our Peter Bias Ice Cream.
So you guys taken, so the meeting is On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Dory, thanks for stepping up.